To order and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to the October 21st County Commission meeting. I remind you to silence your cell phones. The meeting documents are on the end of the counter next to Commissioner Kelly. And Robert is available in the front row if you need listening devices. Routine business. Item one is consider a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion made. Second.
I was looking for a deferral on...
A substitute motion to defer item or move item 14, no.
15.
Item 15. And do we want to move it to the...
Just move it to the first.
...number 11? Or 10?
Move it to, yeah, ahead of 10.
Move it to, ahead of...
Second.
I have a substitute motion to move item number 15 ahead of 10. Any other comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Item two is to approve the county commission minutes of October 14th, 2014.
Move the minutes, second.
I have a motion and a second on the minutes. Are there any additions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Item three are bills to be paid in the amount of $316,606.15.
Pay the bills, second.
Motion and a second on the bills. Any comments?
There are some larger bills from the highway department, but that's about it.
And the audit bill, which comes out of the county commission bills, and was quite a bit more than was budgeted for, so... Any other comments? I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Item four, reports. The register of deeds official statement of revenue collected during September 2014 has been received and is placed on file in the auditor's office. Item five is personnel actions. A is consider a motion to approve the routine personnel actions.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second on routine actions. Any questions for Carrie? Say none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Item B is to authorize the chairman to sign an agreement between Minnehaha County and Lincoln County for human resources services. Carrie Dever.
Good morning.
Good morning.
You recall, of course, that we've been contracting with Lincoln County to provide human resources services over the last couple of years. That contract ends at the end of December, so the contract before you is a renewable. This is set up to be a one-year renewable contract. We'll look at the cost of providing services annually, but as long as it continues to go well, we would hope to continue that relationship. So I'm asking for your approval on the contract this morning.
Are there any questions for Carrie on this contract? Look for a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to agree the contract between Minnehaha County and Lincoln County for human services, or human resources services. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Item C is consider a motion to approve the 2015 premiums for the Minnehaha County health and dental plans. Carrie Dever.
Good morning. I love it when I get to bring good news to the commission, and this morning I have good news. This is the time of year that we do our annual premium review. We look at the cost of providing our health and our dental insurance, including everything that's a component of that, meaning administrative fees, stop-loss insurance, prescription costs, Affordable Care Act fees, and the whole ball of wax. Thankfully, we've had a fairly good premium year, and/or rather a claim year, and I'm not recommending any increase in premiums at all. If I were to go through that a little bit with you, and I know these figures can get kind of small. What we do is we take a look at the claims. And you remember, of course, this is an exact science. Every year we look at this and we try and estimate or tell the future. And I'm, you know, only so good at that as I can be. But thankfully, we did have claim experience close to what we were anticipating last year, so we're on track. And that estimated percent increase seems to be holding out fairly well for us. So if we continue to use an estimated trend of about 7% for claims, we can expect that we'll have through the end of this year about 2.7 million in healthcare claims alone, and about 3 million by next year. Our administrative fees typically increase about 4% each year. That's an estimate we use until we finalize the contracts with all of our providers, our third-party administrators. Stop-loss is usually one where you might remember we see 20% increases there from year to year. Initially, we started out expecting about a 15% increase. We're still in negotiations there very honestly, and we're hoping to see even less than the 7% reflected here, so that's going fairly well. Prescription costs tend to run a little bit higher. They're averaging around 9%. Pharmacy administrative fees, we're not expecting any for next year, but because those are actually assessed per claim, we know that claims will go up, so I budget for about a 2%. Looking at that, we are expecting about 4.3 million for next year for operating the health plan without fees such as our stop-loss specific egg. And we don't know that we'll hit that 100, so I budget for it just in case. And then we have two fees related to the Affordable Care Act. So with all that put together, we're expecting about a total expenses of 4.5 million, and our current revenue, based on our current enrollment for premiums, is bringing in 4.5. So based on that, no increase is necessary. This is fairly thin. There isn't a lot of buffer there unless, of course, we don't hit our stop-loss, so I would not expect that this is going to happen next year. Any questions?
Yeah.
Commissioner Benega.
Carrie, this includes the premium holidays that we've had or anticipated?
This is the budget for next year, so this assumes...
So there's no premium holidays planned at this point? But last year we had two, was that correct?
So far this year, we've had three.
Three.
So we're, again, if, when we're projecting forward, if our claims come in lower, that's when we're able to do that.
Correct. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Kelly.
Carrie, how much, and you may not know this, how much of this of our increased costs have come from Affordable Care Act?
$37,000 for just the fees alone. As far as the increase in coverage level, for us, it's very little. You might recall that we'd done a plan design review shortly before the Affordable Care Act even really came into play. And we started at that point covering preventative health issues at 100%. So really, we didn't incur that much fees for plan design or coverage levels, but we do have, of course, exposure. We will incur those fees for the PCORI and the reinsurance fees.
So when we made those changes before Affordable Care Act, there was anticipation of...
No.
No?
Nope. We were just looking at reasonable, good things to do to encourage employees to utilize the health plan where they need to, to make sure they're getting preventative care.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Carrie?
On the dental side?
You ready to go to that?
Yep. Again, good news. In fact, our dental claims are on track to come in even slightly lower than last year's. And if you remember, each year when I talk to you about it, we tend to average between a 5 and a 7% increase in dental fees, so for us to come back truly and have a flat year is unusual. But because they didn't go up to 5% we were expecting last year, there's no need to increase premiums for 2015. So, good news all around.
Any questions on the dental side? Okay, we'll be looking for a motion to approve the premiums for the health and dental plans.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
There are no applications for abatement today. Item seven are notices and requests. Notice from the South Dakota Board on Geographic Names of Public Comment Period Over Proposed Names of Dills Island for an Unnamed Island in the Big Sioux River in Minnehaha County. Comments to be submitted not later than November 7th, 2014. B is a notice from the South Dakota Department of Transportation of public open house, 5:30 p.m. to 7:00 p.m., October 21st, 2014, Gloria Day Lutheran Church, at 5500 East 57th Street in Sioux Falls for environment assessment of northern segment of Highway 100, south of Madison Street to I-90, and public written comment period until November 6th, 2014. Item C is a notice from Sioux Falls Park and Recreation of a public input meeting for Terrace Park Master Plan, Monday, October 27th, 2014, at the Maine Library, 200 North Dakota Avenue, Sioux Falls. There are no planning and zoning notices today. The next item is petition for compromise of lien. John Pecus.
Thank you. This is on DPNO number 51242, in the amount of $4,736.99. The commission office received a request on a compromise of lien. The applicant states that there is no real estate involved with this particular request. The lien apparently is in the name of the applicant and his spouse, and it's primarily for legal defense services occurring between October of 2003 and July of 2014. To date, the applicant has made payments totaling $579.91, bringing the lien account to its present balance of $4,736.99. There was another lien that was in the name of his spouse that was related to poor relief services and public defenders in the amount of $839.99. However, that currently is not the applicant's lien. That would be his spouse. Now, apparently, the applicant states that he was falsely accused of a crime. He was convicted and sent to prison for 10 years, and he feels that he doesn't have to make any more payments related to the lien that he incurred because of the time he served in the state of South Dakota State Penitentiary. And of course, because of that, he is currently unemployed. He has no assets. He does have back child support payments that he owes in the amount of $4,200. And of course, he has various odd jobs to try to make his support. His spouse is currently unemployed. She has some surgical procedures that she is going to be undertaking in the near future, and apparently, they receive some help from her father, or his father-in-law. Once again, the applicant is asking for the release of the lien in full with no further payment, so he's basically paid about $579, and he wants the county commission to release the $4,700 lien. And once again, he feels that he served his debt to society when he served his time in prison. I, I'm not going to make a motion, but if one of the other commissioners feels compelled to do so, they certainly can. And I don't know if he's here today to address the commission, but at this point, I'm going to go ahead and leave it open.
Are there any comments from the commission to start off? Is the applicant here? Is the applicant here? The applicant is not here, so it comes back to the commission.
We don't have to take the action, Madam Chair, but I'll make a motion to deny.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second to deny the compromise of lien. Are there any comments? Commissioner Pecus?
The applicant, the applicant has made payments in the past. I would urge him to continue.
There is no real estate involved in this compromise, and a lot of times, we look at that too, and they have not made a significant amount of payments on the amount owed. So I have a motion and a second to deny. Any other comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
All right. The next DPNO is number 78760, in the amount of $598.60. In this particular request, we add the notice that Wells Fargo Bank is actually involved in a foreclosure action. The county actually has a lien pending against the property, and it is a junior lien, which means that Wells Fargo has to foreclose out all the other junior liens, which would include Minnehaha County. And so they're actually seeking to do a foreclosure. This is in relationship to public defender costs. Wells Fargo has offered $50 in exchange for a release of lien on the property, and of course, it does nothing to resolve the underlying tax lien that will be remaining against the property. So I'll make that motion.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion? Commissioner Barth?
It does leave it against the individual, though, so...
Yes.
The fact that the property is excused at this point is one thing. If someone else wants to speak next, I do have another comment.
Is there any other comments? Commissioner Benega?
I have a comment, and I think Jeff will probably make the same one, but it's surprising to me when I look at the package of information that was sent, and for someone to get a public defender service with the abilities that they have to borrow money at that level and live in that part of the community strikes me as there's something wrong with the system, frankly. I'm a little disappointed that we're kind of at the tail end of the dog, which we all understand the federal government and the tax lien circumstances are going to take their precedent, but to even be able to get into the system, I think, is incorrect.
Commissioner Barth, did you have additional comments?
That's exactly my comment. The fact is that this property is foreclosed on with $400,000 against it. These people had, could borrow $400,000, but they couldn't come up with $600 bucks for a defense attorney, and came and threw themselves on the mercy of this county. Text me up.
Ken, you have a comment, please.
This is just another outstanding example of where we see that there might be some holes in this system. And so, as you know, we have had, doing some work to put together some guidelines that establish income criteria and other processes for review of assets before the county will recommend, or before there's an appointment made for the county to pay for an attorney. And that we've had some meetings already with the courts, and that we have some other meetings scheduled here in about two weeks in order to review some further information, but we've already presented the courts with the draft of what we're thinking about and what we'd like to do as a pilot program to concentrate on out-of-county, or out-of-custody misdemeanors where we see, as maybe we have some time and some benefit, to actually review the applications that are submitted, verify assets, get documents, before we get to the point where the county's paying for attorney services for someone who's claiming to be indigent.
Commissioner Kelly.
Ken? Do I understand that the taxes which are delinquent on the House will still be...
Yeah.
Does not affect them at all?
No. This just, all you're doing by your action today is removing this county aid lien against the real estate only, just to clear up that process, and that for a payment of $50, the lien itself will still remain against the individual.
Good.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying.
Well, I'm, excuse me, but the taxes also remain...
Oh, yeah. Taxes, yeah.
I mean, the property cannot be transferred until taxes are paid.
Taxes, taxes, well, I don't know if that's a transfer, but taxes are, taxes will get paid.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a motion, second. Commissioner Barth?
I just want to comment again, you know, that I was talking to a magistrate judge from another area, and he was saying that in his court, he asks people, you know, "Who bought your breakfast?", you know, because they zero everything out. I mean, they got no money in their pocket, that they're smoking cigarettes, they got a cellphone, they drove here. You know, "Whose car is that?", and, you know, "It's my mother's." "Who bought your breakfast?", you know, "My sister." Give me a break. Nobody has nothing. Sorry. Is that a double negative?
I have a, oh, Commissioner Pecus.
Well, and I just want to be very clear that this is primarily a foreclosure action where the primary lien holder is Wells Fargo. And Wells Fargo is just trying to clean up this property so we can get it transferred, so to get back on the property tax rolls. So Minnehaha County will start to recover some of those unpaid taxes. So, you know, we're working with the primary lien holder here. And the other, the other part that I have to stress over and over again, because I've had this conversation recently with several different parties, is that a junior lien holder does not have the ability to go ahead and to force the primary lien holder to somehow come up with the dough. We're foreclosing out the junior liens. If the, if Minnehaha County wants to bring the, bring the property and redeem it completely and buy out the primary mortgage holder, we have the opportunity to do that, but we'd have to come up with close to, what, a half a million plus to get, to get in that position. So I want to make it very clear to the people that are watching that this is actually a simple step in the process for us to get this property back into possession so that we can start recovering some of those taxes. Go ahead, Kirsten.
And if I may add to that, I know the amount seems low, but in this particular posture, I would advise accepting the settlement offer because there's a good chance that there will be not even $50 if you do not. So...
I have a motion and a second to approve this DPNO. Any other comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
The next item is an opportunity for public comment.
This is a time when, if you would like to speak on something that is not on the agenda, Mr. Litz.
Good morning. Bob Litz from the auditor's office. It's been expressed some concerns about precincts. And, you know, we, every year for the primary, as opposed to the general election, we do change a few precincts around for a variety of reasons, and the main one this year here was, was school construction. And during the primary, I had 68 precincts. We're back up to 71 now. But the process for notifying people when we change a precinct is, is we send out a card. And that card probably arrive between three and four days before the election. Seems rather timely, and part of the reason for that is we just quit taking voter registrations yesterday. We need till the end of the week to clean them up. Obviously, we're not going to be working Saturday, and so Monday morning, those cards will be dropped into the mail. I have six precincts that are going out for a notification of changes. We've moved some of them back. We've been able to do that, and some of them are still kind of floating. ADA concerns are another good reason that we try to change precincts, and when we do that, they're usually permanent ones. But like I said, I wanted the public to know that we're aware of the concerns about these precincts, and there are changes, and we are notifying them.
Okay. Any questions?
Yes.
Commissioner Kelly.
Now, they can go on, people can go online to the Secretary of State's office and put in their address and get their precinct, is that correct?
Yes, that's, that's, that's correct.
Will that be, that information be accurate this year?
Well, you know...
I mean, we had some issues last year. We had one, and they had the other, and...
And to that end, Dick, we, we brought in an extra part-time worker this year, and what we did is we installed a GIS. So we have the ability to pull up a precinct, and we can expand it. And all the addresses that are in there are on a little black dot inside there, so you can click on that dot in the address, and the name of that person will come up. And as we, we've gone back and forth with the total vote out of the Secretary of State's, and every time we do, we bring it back. If there's a red dot outside of that precinct, that means somebody is not where they're supposed to be. And so we focused on that, and we've done it three times. Now, there are certain circumstances for people being outside of there, and one of them would be a judge, a police officer, folks like that, and those there. And we have a special address for them, so they're always going to appear out. We have that list. We know who they are. So we, we believe that we've gotten those concerns taken care of. Commissioner Kelly.
And if, if I may, if, if, if someone has an issue, if someone is confused as to what to do, they call your office?
Absolutely. You can call our office. We have a lot more resources, you know, at, at our fingertips. Our whole staff is available for doing that. Everybody knows how to do it. You know, if you don't like what you see on the Secretary of State's website, and I can't, I have no control over what's out there, you may like what's on ours.
So who's the controlling factor? Them or you?
Well, we put the information up in there, good, but what they have on their website, I'm not, you know, I don't have any control. I have control over what we have on ours down here, and our GIS, our, our planning department has put one together. The information that people have reportedly gotten off the Secretary of State's website is accurate.
Commissioner Barth?
Bob, I appreciate you bringing this up, but bottom line, a couple of places that were scheduled to be precinct voting locations have just recently been changed because of school construction. Is that...
Well, they've not been recently changed. The one in, that I'm referring to in particular, that the construction is not finished yet, is Pettigrew, so we had to move, we had to keep that precinct at Kennedy. During the primary, I had two precincts at Kennedy, and I've kept them there. The other ones that I'm working on, Hawthorne was closed. We moved that over to Cathedral. That's going back to Hawthorne. Axdel Park was closed, so we moved that to Augustana Lutheran. That's going back over there. And I can't recall right offhand which ones they are, but there's six cards going out this time.
Thank you for bringing this up.
Thank you very much. Are there any other public comments? Commissioner Benega?
Just as a community service announcement, if you will. Active Generations, every year does a Rape the Town event, and every year, we do between 275 and 300 lawns for people who are either elderly or disabled, and it's also income limited. Right now, we have more volunteers than we've ever had before, so we have a need for more lawns. And Jeff, you cannot get yours raped.
I don't make very much.
But anyway, we would love to have people apply for that because frankly, it keeps people independent and at home, and it's a great community service. And if we can put those additional volunteers to work, we'd love to do that, and they can call either the helpline or Active Generations to get that done.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Benega. Any other public comments? All right, this will move on.
Regular business. The next item is to approve a resolution to declare tax-deed properties RDID 29683, 43295, and 28812 as surplus for a purpose of donation to CCOG Southeastern Development Foundation. Ken McFarland.
Commissioners, as you know, you discussed this last week, the auditor's office and the treasurer's office are dealing with the number of tax-deed properties, and there are three properties that came up during the process, excuse me, three properties that came up during the tax-deed process that the auditor has been working with. Southeastern Council of Government with their Southeastern Development Foundation in order to rehab these properties with the goal of providing some affordable housing and getting these properties back on the tax rolls. As you know, as a county commission, you have the ability to donate county property, real or personal, to nonprofit agencies under the auspices of SDCL 7-29-26. The only catch with that, if you're going to do that, you need to do it by unanimous vote of the commission. So what we have before you today is a resolution that describes those three tax-deed properties and that, and asking that you donate them to the Southeastern Development Foundation and to direct that all of the taxes and interests be abated, and that the treasurer go ahead and issue the quitclaim deed of those properties to it. Again, this needs to be done by unanimous vote, and so, given the nature of this action, we would ask that if you all approve it, that you all sign the resolution.
Are there any questions for Ken on this?
Move for approval.
Second.
I have a motion and a section, and a second to declare surplus property to donate to CCOG?
To the Southeastern Development...
Excuse me, Southeastern Development Foundation. That's right. She made that point last week.
Should do a roll call on this.
Do a roll call vote.
Commissioner Kelly?
Yes.
Oh, excuse me. Did you have...
If you go ahead to the vote, please. I just had an addition.
Okay. Okay. Roll call vote. Kelly?
Yes.
Pecus?
Yes.
Benega?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Hyper? Yes. Motion passes four to zero.
Five to zero.
Five to zero unanimously. Sorry.
I just wanted to comment, last year, we gave away a tax-deed property to the same organization, and they have been struggling for a year to get this thing through. And originally, and no offense, Kirsten or John, but I think the lawyers, the junior lawyers that were assigned to her was struggling with procedure and a bunch of things like this here, and it was getting bogged down. I made the suggestion, why don't you call the U.S. Attorney's Office and explain to them in common sense terms what's going on, and Brendan Johnson agreed. And so now, it looks like this, this matter of the federal tax deed is going to get taken care of on that property as well. And they have a governor's house that they're going to put on that as well.
Good. Thank you.
The next item, consider a recommendation for renewal issuance of surface ambulance licenses in Minnehaha County. Ken McFarland.
Commissioners, as you know, we have a county ordinance that licenses surface transportation of ambulance services within the county. Our current areas, we have six areas that we license within the county, and that, as you can see, currently, the license holders are in Service Area 1 is the Del Rapids Community Community Ambulance Service. In Service Area Two is the Garrison Community Ambulance. Three is Humboldt. Four is Jasper. Five is Rural Metro. And six is MedStar out of Brandon. All of those licenses expire at the end of this year, and our ordinance provides for a two-year licensing period. So we are looking at new applications for the 2015 and 2016 license terms. According to our ordinance, all of the applications for the service needed to be in by September 1, and that did in fact happen. And so the applications we received, we had Del Rapids apply for Service Area One. In Service Area Two, we actually had two applications, one from Garrison Community Ambulance and one from MedStar. We received one application for Service Area Three from Humboldt. We received one for Area Four from Jasper, one from Area Five for Rural Metro, and one in Area Six from MedStar. In addition to this, by our ordinance, our Quality Assurance Director, which is Dr. Jeff Luther, has reviewed all of the ambulance applications to see if these comply with current ordinance standards for licensure. He's also taken a look at a number of quality assurance items with run reports, and you do have that breakdown of information in your packets from what he did find. I'm not going to steal Dr. Luther's thunder about what he found in the reports, and I'll let him do that here shortly. For your information, what we provided in your packet, we did provide a copy of Dr. Luther's report. We also provided a copy for you of the number of calls that were dispatched by Metro Communications for each of these areas, both for 2013 and for 2014 to date. As you consider licensing, as you consider these applications for licensure, there's a couple things that, and some information that we do need to bring to your attention. One of the first items is, number five, is in that service area. As you know, the city of Sioux Falls is also going through a licensing period right now for ambulance services, and that, and their decision, what they come up with, may in fact impact what eventually might happen in Area Five. I can't say that it will or it won't, but it is, it is an area that you do need to at least consider as we take a look at that area for the future. You know, if we do need to get into, you know, there may be a possibility at some point in time where we might have to solicit other applications for that, depending on the decision that comes from the city. So the two are kind of tied. The other issue, and again, I've touched on it, we have received two applications for Service Area and in Service Area Two, again, from the current provider, Garrison, and from MedStar. And there's representatives here from both services if you have any questions for them regarding those applications. And that you may, of course, decide that today, if you feel like you have enough information, you can make a licensing decision today if you so choose, or you could put it out for other information pending the two items that I've raised for you and that has issues. So if you have any questions, I'll try to answer them. You also have a copy of the ordinance for your review. And with that, I think, if you'd allow, we'll just let Dr. Luther come up and tell you what he found during review of the applications.
Thank you, Ken.
Thank you, Ken. Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Dr. Jeff Luther, the Quality Assurance Director for the ground ambulance services in Minnehaw County. And that Quality Assurance review is for basic life provision, pre-hospital EMS. Thank you. I did provide a summary, as I did last year, and I know that there was the desire of the Commissioners for me to report quarterly, but based on the paucity of records that would come in, I thought that it would be better just to run a continuum with these. And certainly, if there were any problems along the way, I would have did the quarterly report. But this is all inclusive of the calls that I've reviewed to date. As Ken said, there are some other variables right now that are coming to surface, and that is, in particular, the primary service area for Five. As you know, the city has a request for proposal out for services for ALS, or Advanced Life Support Service, in the city of Sioux Falls. But part of that, we have this license for this area, which is currently provided by Rural Metro Ambulance. But I provided a summary that kind of, again, review what Ken had said. There are six primary service areas that are covered by the ambulances that he had talked about, including Del Rapids, Garrison, Rural Metro, MedStar, Jasper is way up into the corner, and then Humboldt Ambulance Service. As per the ordinance, the types and nature of calls that I review, all of those would include trauma, cardiac calls, pediatric calls, and then a 25% random selection. And there was a change in how I received reports, which was very beneficial last year, because those are now dropped off in packet to the county Commissioner's Office, and I picked those up at Ken's office. So it really has, I think, helped with our compliance in gathering this information more timely and efficiently than me trying to track those down. At no one's fault, these reports sometimes will get lost, and the requirements for the primary service area isn't sometimes their first priority to get through those reports. But this has helped considerably. The performance indicators that I review, I have listed on Page One, and there's a compendium of those, including but not limited to the time en route, the overall patient assessment, primary care patient assessment that includes oxygen where appropriate, you know, splinting, spinal immobilization and trauma calls, appropriate wound care. I do look at scene times, but again, because of the makeup of our care provision in the county involves both BLS and ALS, and often, there is a helicopter that could be called to medical and trauma calls that can impact scene times favorably for the patient. But there are some particular instances that we really pay attention to, or I do. That is trauma. Trauma has to have a very minimal scene time. And STEMI, this is a heart attack call. This is usually based on a heart tracing, which we don't do in the BLS community anyways. But when it is a chestache call, and we do have an EKG done, with that information, we have other directions in terms of response and the care that will be given, even pre-hospital. So I look at that. Again, that's in a different bailiwick. It's not in the BLS criteria. And in stroke scene times, those call types that involve symptoms consistent with a stroke, I look at that as well, because we do have a sensitive time unseen and in transport times. I picked up all of the reports I have in my possession, as you do, the number of calls in total for the county this year. And the records that were received as of October 15th from all these services for the county, for BLS, that I reviewed totaled 386. Now, again, considering all of those performance indicators that are broken out, I'll review some or all of those. And how I do that is, some of these runs now, because the services have both advanced life support and BLS, but we can't do advanced life support without first doing some primary care assessment, which involves all of those parameters in the BLS world or the basic life support world. And we can't discount the importance of that 90 seconds first patient contact, which involves most of the time just basic life support measures. Having said that, the calls that I needed to review this past year at that level was, included two separate calls, and those ended up being documentation issues. It did not impact care. So I was satisfied with the outcome of that, where I did have to do an extended review. Also, I think the Commission needs to know that this is a multifaceted process. It just doesn't involve me getting reports from the ambulance services. There are multidisciplinary EMS reviews that I participate in. It does not involve the ambulance services themselves. But those calls where there may be an advanced life support intercept or a helicopter or a bad trauma, this is reviewed on other levels that I happen to sit in on. And I can say that comfortably, that in our BLS environment, all of those performance indicators were met with at least 95% of the time. So I think with respect to the quality, we're making all of those parameters, and we're providing good care in the county. I also provided just kind of a snapshot that I get from Darren and Matt Thule from 911 Dispatch Center, which is, if I didn't have those guys, it would be really difficult to do this. So they helped me tremendously. I get the list of information, and again, on Page Two, there's just a snapshot of the types of things that I receive. The first page has mostly Rural Metro, but there's MedStar in there, and Garrison, and Del Rapids. But it kind of gives you an idea of the nature of the call, the transport code, which is something that we look at. If we see a call that is Code Four on the dispatch, that usually, in the ALS world, means that police, fire, ambulance, all of those are responding. Transport codes are a little bit different. In the Code One, Two, and Three, that transport code is reflective of if they're going lights and siren and expediting the transport, which is important, because that impacts everything, not just patient care, but also public safety. So I look at those calls and try and make sense of those that may not have needed to transport Code Three lights and sirens, again, because of the public safety issue. I also had included the types of calls. You can see those. Some of these have nothing to do with EMS or pre-hospital care, but some of these do turn into medical calls, you know, arson, a bill skip, I don't know how that would, but bomb threats, burglary, those sorts of things I just added, just for your interest. And I didn't want to pull them out, but I thought they were interesting, so I left those in. And you can see that there's the, it's a very busy service in the county with respect to the types of calls. The important ones that we look at are those trauma calls, the cardiac calls, and then I discern out pediatric calls. On the table that I have drafted, this one here, that has the percentage of the types of calls per month, is really kind of the meat and potatoes of the report. It'll give you a snapshot. I started in December 13 to conclude that, because we're still waiting for some of those 13 reports to come in, and they did come in with the help of Ken, and I don't know whose idea it was, one of the Commissioners, but dropping those reports off at the county was a big help to me. So you can see the respective percentages of the types of calls that these services respond to. And again, going through all of the performance indicators with respect to quality, they were met with respect to that basic life support level. I also included the Minnehaw County Sheriff's Office and the emergency civil defense is what they call it, but I know that's not what it is. Even though they're not involved in transport, we do have a good system out there of first response on some of these medical and trauma calls. We have rubber on the road with the sheriff's deputies and EMT basics that are providing first response to some of these calls. Most of those are the trauma calls and your bad medical calls. Next, I then reviewed all the ambulance applications, as I do, for the individual service areas. And I've got a breakdown of some of the parameters I looked at. This isn't all-inclusive, but the state requires each service to be licensed with, regarding their ambulance. So I did not, this go around, go out and inspect the ambulances. I've inspected Rural Metro's. I've inspected MedStars in the past. But a lot of these services now have advanced life support capability, so they have medications on their rigs now. I don't get into that. That's up to their individual medical directors to be certain that medications are not dated. The skills at that level are validated accordingly. So if we look at the number of vehicles, I looked at that, the claimed availability on the application, look at response times, you know, they have 60 seconds once alerted to respond that someone is en route, and in the county, per the ordinance, 10 minutes to respond. And then I broke down the staffing that was listed, the equipment. Again, at the BLS level, that's per the state requirements. And then I listed their medical directors, as well as, I have direct medical control, which is a little bit misleading, but that is a process where, at the ALS level, they can actually call ahead for online medical control. But also, if they have any questions, the hospitals that, or the destinations that these services primarily respond to are listed, which is all of our critical care access hospitals. And then lastly, I looked at insurance documentation, and all of those were met. There is some current process that needs to be looked at, and that is the licensing updates of all of their EMT basics. I did not do primary verification of that. They listed it, so I'll take it for that, that everybody that's in EMT has had the proper, EMT basic has had the proper training. So with that, that's kind of the summary of the quality, as well as what I reviewed for the applications for these varying service areas. Again, there is some variable that is out there. I don't know. I can't predict if that would be impacting the county, and that's his primary service area Five with Rural Metro and the city. I was informed that the vendors are aware of this, but I don't know in the application process for that, how well that's been detailed out. And if that needs to be addressed, that's something that we may have to come back and review again as far as awarding that district, that primary service area.
Okay. Any questions for Dr. Luther? All right. Thank you. Any questions for Ken? Commissioner Benega?
Do we have a timeframe, Ken, on when the city's going to do their final decision on this process?
The, excuse me, the information that I've been told is that, I mean, that review process is going on even yet this week, but they're, the hope is to take something to the council, a recommendation to the council, from what I understand, on November 4. Now, one thing that I do need to make you aware of, and Kirsten and I just had this conversation, and that our ordinance does talk about trying to make a decision within 60 days after the receipt of these, which puts us towards that end of October, 1st of November timeline, in that, in order to try and make a decision on what to do with these applications. That's going to be before we know anything with the city in that regards. So we may, you know, we may end up having to decide, and then, of course, with the election, and that we're not meeting that day because of the election. So that takes out a timeframe for us to do a consideration. So, you know, that might be something that we just have to deal with if, in fact, it presents itself to us at the appropriate time. And that, so we may not be able to wait to make a decision on that and have to deal with it when we have, if, if and when we have to deal with it.
Commissioner Kelly?
Ken, what options do we have other than acting on this right, or now?
Well, like I said, according to the ordinance, and that we have a timeframe that we have to decide on the, on the applications, and we're approaching that. And again, with the not meeting on the 4th, you know, that's really the outside limit. I think we could push a decision, which means that we really would have to make some sort of decisions on what we want to do with these applications no later than next week.
Okay, but do we have the ability to extend the current contract, say, until some point in 2015? Because, you know, Five could be a significant problem for us, and depending on what happens with the city.
It could be an issue, in that, you know, one of the things that perhaps we could take a look at doing is if we do make a decision on what we have in front of us and make an award, and again, if that does in fact change, and we have to extend the licensing period through some sort of emergency action on behalf of the commission, I think we could do that, and that through an emergency action. And then if we have to, you know, quite frankly, we're just going to have to adjust to make in that, you know, to, if we need to go out for a different provider, and that in that area, if it presents itself. The problem is, we just don't know right now.
Well, so you're saying, according to ordinance, we need to make a decision?
We do.
Perhaps even today?
No, I, next week, for sure.
Okay. But that if, if something changes in the ability to have District Five covered, then we go back to square one, and do we rebid the whole process, or?
We may, that may very well be a recommendation that we come up with, is that, you know, depending on what circumstances present themselves to us, we may in fact have to either re-go out for new applications for that area, and that if we're faced with the fact that we don't have a provider in that area. The problem is, we just don't know yet.
So what's your recommendation?
Well, my recommendation would be, come the time that you're going to make an, you know, a decision on any of these applications, that you make the decision based on what you have in front of you right now. And if we have to change, then we have to change when the opportunity presents itself. That would be my recommendation.
Kirsten has a comment.
Legally, you have to approve or deny. It is by, at the latest, next week's meeting. In fact, I don't even think the first meeting of November would qualify. I think you're past the 60-day limit, even if we had a meeting then, so.
Commissioner Peckus?
I think we need to make a decision either today or next week. The reality of the circumstances at the app... The reality of the circumstances at the applicants turned in their valid applications, which were vetted and reviewed by Dr. Luther, in that we need to make our decision with what's before the commission today, not what may happen sometime in the future. Ultimately, if a license is awarded to somebody and for what impractical circumstance may come up that they can't perform, then at that point in time, with Dr. Luther's recommendations pursuant to our ordinance, we'll take action. But at this point, I'm prepared to make a decision with the applications that were presented to this commission today. I'm not looking down the road. It's been done, it's completed, the vendors are here, we need to make the call now.
And like I said, and you do have, you know, until, you can also make, we're saying that the latest you can make a decision is next week. But to reiterate basically what John says, my recommendation is, you need to make a decision based on the applications that we have in hand, and that, you know, for, for that area, and that, and if we have to do some sort of adjustment at a later date based on the circumstances that present themselves, then that's what we need to work at. But.
Kirsten?
If I just may speak to this, is there anyone from the District Five applicant here?
I didn't see them.
I just wondered if the commission would like to hear some sort of statement on, from them, on how the city process affects that, or any assurances that they could fulfill it, but if they're not here, then I guess it's fine.
Commissioner Bartholomew? MedStar is an applicant for that district, and they are here.
Okay. Did you have a comment?
They are not an applicant for District Five.
No.
Wow. I do have a question or two. Last time, Ken, when we did this, we did redraw the district lines a bit, and I can remember drawing in.
We did.
A pencil and stuff. Is there any contemplation of changing these lines at all?
We have not done anything in that regard since those lines were redrawn.
Commissioner Bennigan, did you have a comment?
I guess my only issue is, is I think the people are already here, they've made the commitment, they've made the deadlines, they've made everything that they need to do next week. There's very unlikely this city's going to have their decision made, so it's not going to change our decision today or next week. So I think we need to make it today and move forward, and if there are adjustments that need to be made down the road, we'll make them.
And the only other, like I said, the only other issue that if, that presents itself too, is the fact that you have two applications for one of the districts, and that we do have, like I said, there's representatives here from all the services except for District Five, you know, that applicant there, if you have any questions, or if any of those folks would like to make any comments to you at all.
Commissioner Kelly?
It would appear there's really no issue then if we do, as you say, except we've got to decide on District Two, is that correct? And if that's the case, then we should probably hear from those people and.
Are you ready to hear from the applicants? Okay. MedStar, you want to speak to your application, please?
Hello, Commissioner, thanks for having us here again today. First, I want to introduce the people that are with me, if I can. My name is Jay Major, president, CEO of MedStar Ambulances and also paramedic. Here is Gary Bauer, he's the Director of Operations, he's a critical care paramedic. And next to him is our two supervisors, Chris and Brian. So that's who we brought with us today. Just to explain a little bit about our application, four years ago, I believe it was, that we first obtained our county license. And since that time, on a daily basis, we have four advanced critical care life support ambulances available for the city and for the county and for the other work that we do. We have another three vehicles that we can staff. That's a total of seven ambulances in that area right now as we speak. When a call comes in, that call's answered up in less than 30 seconds with MedStar, and there's a truck on the road within less than a minute. And that is wherever we're going in the city. In the last four years, we've needed help once, and we've called for that help and mutual aid because all of our vehicles were gone. Other than that, we've handled all of our emergency response, all with, well within the range of the time responses that are required, in fact, well above. So as I, as I speak to the application areas that we're looking at, we are a 24/7, 365-day-a-year ambulance service, available to take calls. So when a call comes in, we don't have people at home that need to respond from home to go to an ambulance, to hop in that and go. We leave straight from our station with paramedics. And that is why we opted to also ask for Section Two. Now, we're not asking for the city of Garrettson, that's not included in that. Section Two is, is everything but the city of Garrettson, so we're not looking at taking anybody's ambulance service away, we're looking for enhancing the system. The other thing I think would be valuable and important for you is to know that we would do it with no subsidy. We would include that as part of what we're doing right now with no subsidy. And having said that, if there's no questions for me, I will have Gary Bauer, our Director of Operations, come up and speak to this issue just a little bit for you. Is there any questions for me?
Commissioner Bartholomew?
When you did call for mutual aid, Jay, who was it?
We had Royal Metro respond, and in fact, it was a call into the city of Brandon. We had three 911 calls at that point in Brandon, that was the fourth call, and we had Royal Metro responding to Brandon.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Jay? All right. Do you want to have Gary speak?
Like Jay said, my name is Gary Bauer, I'm Director of Ops, I've had that position for a little over a year. We looked at our areas that we were going to apply for, we just included the area two, not including the city of Garrettson at all, that was not in the, even in the discussion. That being said, we, if you look at my contract that we wrote, we specifically put language in there addressing mutual aid agreements and those type of things with any existing community ambulances. We would be willing to work hand in hand to try to make the whole system work better. It's like Dr. Luther alluded to, first on scene, the first 90 seconds is important, and after that, it progresses up into the tier levels. And like, as I stated before, we put into our contract specifically, we will work with anyway, our intent is not to run anybody out of town, anybody, take any positions. My staff, the way it's set now, we could cover that area without any additional staffing. So we can do it without the subsidy because we don't, I'm not going to have to hire more people. I have enough people as it sets to handle that without any problem at all. And we staff four people, and then we go up there on call, so we could have six trucks on the road. And then one of the instances that Jay alluded to was actually 911 calls and a huge wreck. And they were calling for lots and lots of ambulances. And as it turned out, when it was all said and done, we ended up covering all the ambulances. But we knew we were getting really attacked, so we had the other people come in to help. We have no, no qualms about helping people or calling for help.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Bauer? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Garrettson here, I want to speak? Anybody from Garrettson? Just identify yourself too, please.
I'm Eric Kintoff. I'm a president of the Garrettson Community Ambulance Board. I listened to Dr. Luther and didn't see a big problem. I have no problem with Royal Metro. We would like to keep our area just the way it is. Just making that smaller of an area in the Garrettson doesn't seem to make a lot of sense to us, or probably to you guys either. And there may be need aid in Area Five later on, so could be a consideration for MedStar down the road, too. Basically, if you guys don't see a big problem with our service, we would like to keep our service where we're at.
Any questions for Mr. Kintoff? Commissioner Pecus?
Mr. Kintoff, last summer, I remember having a meeting with you where you were discussing the fact that you had to pay some fees to MedStar. Can you explain, was it $150?
I believe at that time, we wrote a contract to $150, and we never did that. I was for ALS intercept, and we never did that with MedStar, or, excuse me, Royal Metro, or any other service in the county.
So did you then have to pay that $150 into MedStar for those ALS intercepts?
To my knowledge, that has been paid, yes.
All right.
Commissioner Kelly?
Some time ago, one, you know, you get, what, $50,000, I believe, right now is what we're subsidizing. Do you have, you have a person, you had a full-time person on days, I believe it was?
We have one, yes, full-time person on days, plus a one day goes, I believe it is. Four, three days.
Where does that person live?
One lives in Brandon, and the other one lives in Sioux Falls here. But they stay in the city when they're on, when they're.
They are on station?
They're on station. When they're being paid, they're on station. And we have volunteers that live in the city that cover those days when, you know, Thursday, Friday.
Well, some time ago, we had a request for the person that lives in Brandon to have red light and siren, I believe, on, on their vehicle, so that they could respond back to Garrettson to get the ambulance?
And that was not to respond back to Garrettson to get the ambulance, that's to respond to help with ALS calls.
So the dispatch would come out of Garrettson, but this person would follow up, because this is a paramedic, correct?
Yes, he is a paramedic.
Wait a minute, may I?
Yep.
Wasn't that in response to try to stop the charging back from MedStar because you guys are getting nickelled and dimed on doing the ALS intercepts?
That was part of it, yes.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Can I ask something? Just come up and identify yourself, please.
This is Deb Nelson. My name's Deb Nelson, and I'm an EMT with the Garrettson Ambulance. And I just had a couple figures about the intercepts. Since the paramedic that lives in Brandon has, for this year, he has responded to 33 calls where he has either had his radio on while he's at home, after his regular shift, he has responded to 33 calls on his own when he is just listening to the radio. So before we are even on scene, he's listening to his radio, and if he makes the decision that he could be used as an intercept, he is already on the road and, and up to help us volunteers. I just wanted to clear that up, that, that we have used, and he gave me the number, it was 33 calls, and that was as of September 30. And those calls, like I said, are, are where we have not made the decision that we needed an intercept at that point. And when he is not available, then we do rely on MedStar as our intercept.
Any other questions? Commissioner Bartholomew?
Deb, thanks for that. But basically, I guess the way it could be construed is that if you have to respond from Brandon to a call in the Garrettson area, wouldn't it be just the same as having MedStar respond? And I know I've talked to Justin about it, and it was a pretty inexpensive vehicle that you guys got for him, but, you know, it's $50,000 a year, which to you is a lot of money, and to, believe me, it's a lot of money to this commission, too, as tight as our budget is. But, you know, the, the argument that responding from Brandon, it just, you know, what's the difference between you responding or them responding?
Well, again, we are staffed with volunteers that cover, and when the paramedic responds from Brandon, he's not, he's not on our payroll at that time, he's off duty, and he's, he has his radio on to support us. I don't, I don't use, I don't want to use the term as I'm just a basic, but he's there to support us whether there would be a need for ALS or not. So he is responding on his own time to come up and help us with a call, just as support for us.
So it's sort of a super volunteer at that point?
He is, yes, he is.
Commissioner Bennigan?
Just a quick question, I know in some smaller communities, they're having a difficult time getting enough volunteers to staff. Have you had an issue with that? And then the second part of that, do you get any support financially from the city of Garrettson?
We do get support from the city of Garrettson and from the townships in our area, and they, they are very supportive of the community ambulance in Garrettson. We are well-supported by our, our townships.
What about the volunteer issue?
The volunteers, we are able to fill our schedule. We have, I, I have the numbers here of how many volunteers we have, but we have the schedule, we have it filled, it's posted for us all. When, when a shift, say, an evening shift during the week is not able to be filled, then that is when one of us would step up, or Justin would, would cover the call.
Okay. Any other questions? Commissioner Pecus?
I need to reiterate again that the key to any sort of emergency situation is the first responder. That may be the ambulance. Typically, it could be one of our EMT sheriff deputies, or it could be volunteer fire department. It is a variety of different responses that you're going to have from Miniat County and who the first responder is. So, once again, to the people that are watching and to the people that are here, you know, don't expect the ambulance necessarily to be the first responder on every call you're going to get in Miniat County, it depends on the circumstances.
Thank you for that, John.
Yep.
And in addition to that, our volunteers that are on our ambulance staff do not include our firemen. And our firemen were trained two years ago as EMTs.
So the firemen on our separate fire staff are also EMTs. So when they respond as first responders, they're dual, I guess they're dual duty at that point.
Commissioner Kelly?
How many paramedics do you have in your organization? Just the one?
We have one paramedic, and then there's a volunteer on our service who is also a paramedic, plus we have three registered nurses?
Two.
Two, two registered nurses.
Two, pardon me?
Registered nurses.
Thank you.
Additional questions?
Madam Chair, I wonder if MedStar might want to respond, or, you know, to what they see is their, what they might contribute.
Okay. Thank you, Garrettson.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Say, whether the commission votes yes or no on this, you know, we won't lose any sleep, we're just, we're throwing out some options we think is better for the county and for the county system. I do want to go back to the nickel and dime comment because I thought that was kind of a cheap shot, and, and that was uncalled for. $150 to send a fully equipped paramedic, critical care unit to intercept an ambulance service is cheap in our industry. Normally, it's $300 to $400. And when we go there and we provide that service for Garrettson or anybody else that may come through our territory, they can now build the ALS rate, which they couldn't have built before we got there. So they're actually making money on that $150, and we're not nickel and dime, and Commissioner. You know, so my, my bottom line on this whole thing is, we're not here to attack Garrettson, we think they do a good job. We're here to support them, no matter what your, your vote is here, we're here to support Garrettson and everybody else in the county. In Five, if you lose that, we're here to help you support that until you would come up with a, a, a long-term goal for term, for Five. We're here to help however we can help in the county, we've been doing that the last four years, and we all know that the county does not pay our bills. We all know that the county, our service, the one with Garrettson and everybody else out there loses money. We make ours up on our private transfers, and so we're giving our subsidy back to you of the county, Mr. Pecus. That's how that works. So as we are providing our services in the county, we just see that we have staff, the staff potential to actually better things, and you're right, Mr. Pecus, that the first responders are absolutely primarily, that's, the first 90 seconds, the first, when the first responders get there, is what it is. But don't discard what the advanced life support, critical care, paramedic units can do. That's why their paramedic is leaving Brandon, going to Garrettson, to do the same things that we're saying is valuable. And they prove it's valuable because their paramedic leaves to go to those calls. So at the end of the day, Commissioner, however you vote, we will live with it. I am not here to fight and say to you, please don't keep it the way it is, or please change it. We just threw out there another option for you to look at, and, and that's my whole goal of standing here in front of you. I think we've proven the last 15 years of being in this area that we care about what we do. And, and we're here again because we care. It's that simple with me. There's no ulterior motives, it's that simple. So I'm here to answer any questions that you have.
Commissioner Pecus?
Mr. Major, can you name one other ambulance service in Miniat County that charges when you invoke mutual aid?
I guess you have to rephrase, I don't, the only other full-time service is Royal Metro. And so I can't speak for them and what they do and don't do.
Commissioner Bartholomew? Commissioner Bennigan?
Well, after reviewing some of the numbers, and frankly, it's obvious that the city of Garrettson financially supports the ambulance very well, the townships in the areas support the ambulance service, and the community supports the ambulance with donations and memorials. So they have a significant investment, I would say, in the Garrettson's ambulance service, and they obviously are happy with it, or they wouldn't continue that support. So I think to have the Garrettson community continue as it is, is frankly very important to that group that financially supports it and lives it. So that's where I'm coming from.
Commissioner Bartholomew?
Well, this would be for Jay or for Deb or Eric. Do you guys have mutual aid agreements? Do you guys have mutual aid agreements with each other at all? I mean, I know the one time you called, it was for Rural Metro. But, you know, if Garrettson has got a problem, do you guys call Jasper, or do you call?
There's a built-in mutual aid, Commissioner, and the built-in, we have to have that to apply for the county license, there's a built-in response. So even if you don't have a written response with each other, if you need help, you call the other person to go, and they certainly help. And a lot of times, those mutual aid agreements aren't intercepts. They are, will you please come to our location and handle a patient because we don't have an ambulance available? That's what a lot of the mutual aids are. So, you know, and there, Garrettson would help us, we'd help them, and Rural Metro would help us, we would help them. That's kind of how that scenario works.
Any other questions?
I have one of Dr. Luther.
Okay. Thank you, Jay. Is Dr. Luther still here?
Yeah.
I just can't see him. Oh, okay.
Just a comment while he's coming in. Jay mentioned something about $300 for an ambulance call. When I was called to get my heart in Minneapolis, they flew up, it was like four, 3:00 in the morning or 4:00 in the morning, and ambulance met me there and took me. I was ambulatory, or whatever the word is, that I was sitting up, and delivered me to the hospital, just code one, no lights and siren. Medicare, for some reason or other, denied the bill. They thought I could take a taxi. But the three or four-mile ride from St. Paul Airport, I got a bill for $950. So it's a little different around here and there. Dr. Luther, the bottom line is, not so much the money is what's best for the county and what's best for our residents. Would you have a comment on which either one of these proposals, or who, what better serves our county?
Well, again, you know, taking into consideration, you know, that historically, what we think of as EMS pre-hospital care, the volunteer service, which is a, there's a sanctity there with the volunteer service that I think we need to protect. You know, that's been around for a long time, continues to be. But what we've seen, what we do pre-hospital, has changed, has changed significantly in the last 10 years, and even so in the last five years. And some of the information to get out to the care provision, let's look at oxygen, for example. Oxygen is no longer considered something you want to give to everybody because actually it can be detrimental in certain medical cases. And that's ingrained in all of us that have been at the BLS level. So there has changed significantly in certain ways that we provide care. Your ALS units, or those who are capable of ALS, are usually more best practice evidence-based. Not to say that the volunteers aren't, but that's what they're paid to do. They're trained to provide the latest and up-to-date care possible. But again, if we isolate out the basic life support, again, remember that first minute and a half, two minutes at the patient's side can be the most important, whether it's clearing an airway, straightening out an extremity, or what have you. That doesn't require those advanced skills. And I'm going way around the barn because I really don't know how to answer that. I'm not a very good politician. But if you look at the, if you look at the emotions, the passions, and all that that are involved in our community volunteer service, it's, this is very important to them. And they'll climb off a combine and respond to a injured fellow citizen and give up a lot of part of their day, their businesses, and their lifestyle to do that. That commitment, I think, is important. If we're able to provide the training somehow, which is done through quality reviews if we have to do corrective action, and again, in my experience, providing that corrective action has been pretty easy because a lot of it really hasn't been an insult or an injury to the actual process itself. It's usually been documentation or those sorts of things. We're going to change eventually. This city has grown. I was born and raised here, and I look at the ambulance service when I was a kid, which was a, you know, a fire truck with a four-bait sheet of plywood that would show up with this huge machine that would suction the patient's mouth to the purse, picking up injured patients, to what we've done now in ALS service and the critical care provision in the field. They're able to do a lot of what we do in the emergency room. And I come out of the emergency room as a medical provider, that's what I cut my teeth on. And so they're able to do a lot of things in the field at advanced level that we're already doing in the hospital. So the patient is already delivered to us in an already improved condition. So, you know, it's, what do you want to do?
Without trapping you, you've answered my question.
Okay. And I'm sorry for that, you know, I would make a
No, I appreciate it.
For 25 cents, I'd go over a long time.
Thank you.
It's a tough question because we're comparing different strategies of quality.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you, Dr. Luther.
Thank you.
Back to the commission. Is there a motion? Are you ready for a motion? Do you want more discussion?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion, and then I have some comments, surprisingly. I'll make a motion to approve the existing carriers for each district.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second to approve existing carriers as they were this past time around. Are there any other questions? Commissioner Barth?
Well, first of all, I think MedStar has proven themselves over the years since they first gained a foothold there in Brandon, and I appreciate them coming forward and offering themselves. And who knows, we may be calling on them some more, depending on what happens in the city. But, you know, our county is in transition. We're becoming more populated, we're filling out the empty spaces. Medical care is in transition. And the volunteers are really, if we lost our volunteers, we would never get them back. And, you know, as Dr. Luther talked about climbing off the combine, I was talking to Jim Bennicamp before the meeting, and, you know, some of these folks who are farmers were questioning whether to show up today because it is the height of the harvest season here. There is a lot of crop still in the field, and I thank them all for their efforts. But we, you know, the volunteers are the heart of these communities, but things are changing.
Any other additional comments? Commissioner Kelly?
Well, and the reason I asked Dr. Luther was if there was any glaring problems. I agree with Jeff that MedStar, over the years, has proved themselves very well. However, I think this volunteer aspect of it, and from what I gather, the volunteer care is good, the ALS support is there if they need it. And I guess I agree with the motion because I think we need, without volunteers, we'd be in big trouble in this county. And we need to have that base and that fact that we appreciate these volunteers and that they do handle a big service. I will support the motion.
Any other comments? Commissioner Bennigan?
The only comment that I would make is, when you look at Dr. Luther's performance indicators and the staffing that they have at Garrettson, they do have five paramedics and two are, and so they are qualified to do what we're requesting them to do. And again, the community is supporting this. They have the option of refusing service if they want and moving to another provider, and they have not chosen to do that. They've chosen to step up to the plate and make it happen. So I think we have to honor those requests, and we also have to be aware of the fact that the volunteers are making that significant commitment.
Yeah. Commissioner Pecus?
Well, I just want to bring up some ancient history, and that's that when Minniah County adopted this ordinance, it was actually championed and written by our former Minniah County Chief Civil Deputy State's Attorney, Gary Colwell, before he went over to the city of Sioux Falls. And he really put a lot of effort into this, and he, I think, crafted something that, for lack of a better term, has been evergreen. You know, we really don't have to go back and tweak this very much. So I just wanted to mention that when we're going through and awarding these licenses, that we remember all the efforts that the State's Attorney's Office and Gary Colwell put into it.
Any other comments? I do would like to thank MedStar for coming forward with another option, and, but by reading Dr. Luther's reports, Garrettson is doing a great job, and I don't see any reason to change what we're doing. And we do greatly appreciate volunteers that we have because we get a list every month of who volunteers just in the county commission, not county commission, the offices that we have here in Sioux Falls, and the list is extensive of what volunteers in Minniah County do for government. And without you, we really couldn't do it. I can't even imagine what it would be like if we had to staff ambulances, paid-for ambulances, all over 24/7, 365 days a week. It would be very expensive to taxpayers, so I appreciate what you do. That being said, we have a motion and a second to approve the existing contracts. Any additions? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thank you for coming.
Item 11 is Consider a Bid Award for Public Safety Building HVAC Modifications. Bids opened on October 16th, 2014. Mark Rines.
Morning, Commissioner Markins, Director of Facilities. We received bids from two different contractors for the fan replacement in the public safety building HVAC system. The bids came in quite a bit higher than we expected due to the conditions of the fans. We would like to proceed with the project. We have done some extensive discussion over it, and a few factors might play into the increase in the bid, and we have thought about even doing a rebid to possibly reduce some of the cost. But we also have to keep in mind, though, that the conditions are pretty bad on the fans. There's no parts available, so we would like to proceed with the contract. Rebidding is also an option if you would like us to consider that.
Any questions for Mark on this HB for the J?
I do have a question.
Commissioner Barth?
So we're just doing the base bid, or are we doing the alternates as well?
Just the base bid.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments?
I would move for approval.
Second?
I have a motion and a second to approve the HVAC modifications for the public safety building. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Item 12 is Consider a Bid Award for Roof Repairs, Shingle Replacement at County Facility at 1401 West 51st Street, and Authorize Chairman to Sign the Contracts. Bid opened October 16th, 2014. Lloyd Olson.
Morning, Commissioners. Lloyd Olson, the Director of Facilities. Earlier this year, we requested bids for a re-roof of property at 1401 West 51st Street. There were two bids. One did not meet the specifications, and the second bid was significantly higher than the estimate from our insurance company. We rebid and received four bids with the low bid at $71,929.92 and the high bid at The company is Paul Hamilton Roofing out of Omaha. I visited with them several times. They're very comfortable with the bid they provided, and they anticipate with the weather the way it is that they'll be able to complete the project yet this fall under the specifications that we wrote for the project. So with that, I would recommend your consideration for accepting this bid and signing the contract.
Dick? Commissioner Kelly?
We've already received the insurance proceeds, is that correct?
A portion of it.
How much are we going to get from the insurance company on this?
It's going to be the amount of the project less the deductible.
Okay.
I'm not sure, Ken, what that deductible is at this time.
Okay, I understand that, but so the insurance company will pay
Yes.
Less the deductible to pull them out.
My understanding from Chubb Insurance, which is our insurance group, that they will send a check when they receive a copy of the signed contract.
Okay. Commissioner Bennigan?
I was waving that the deductible's $5,000.
Oh, okay, sorry. Any other questions? Is there a motion for the roofing shingle replacing?
I'll make a second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the contract. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lloyd.
Item 13 is a briefing from Minniah County Veterans Service Officer on Reaching All Veterans Program Initiative. Pat Crouppa.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the 125th anniversary of the state, the governor asked all his departments to come up with a program to emphasize their anniversary. So the South Dakota Department of Veterans Affairs implemented what they're calling Reaching All Veterans Program, and they call it RAV for short. Four parts to the program, and because we are trained by and partially subsidized by the State Department of Veterans Affairs, they included all the CVSOs in their plans without our consent. The first thing they did was, each CVSO was supposed to submit two veterans' pictures and profiles to be published in the newsletter that they put out every week. So I picked two women veterans. I thought that was, I didn't think too many other CVSOs would do that. So one was Lucy, she was a Vietnam nurse, she was a nurse in Vietnam, so she had an interesting story to tell. And the other one was Christine, who made a career in the Air Force. So they were published in the newsletter, so that was kind of cool. The second part was to record all the client visits that we have and send them into the state every couple of months. So they're, I think what they're trying to do is put a list of veterans in South Dakota together. And so as of yesterday, I had submitted 313 names. Those, we only submit the name once, even if we see the client several times, the veteran. But, so that's how many new veterans we've seen this year. Then the third thing was, was what they call a RAV event, where they wanted us to host veterans to talk about their benefits. The whole point of RAV, I should have said at the first, is to make sure veterans are understanding their benefits from the VA and the state, answer their questions, make them aware that we're here to help them. So I did host two events, one in Brandon, and that was the first one. And it was, worked out, the timing was just perfect. They came in, as I was finishing up with one client, another one would come, another veteran would come, and as they left, another veteran would come. It just seemed to work out that way. A reporter came, and there was an article in the Brandon paper, which was kind of nice, talking about RAV. The second one was in Del Rapids, and this, when we first got there and started setting up, they all came. A lot of veterans came all at once. So this time, instead of like a one-on-one, we did more like a group discussion. I would talk about what I thought they might be interested in, and then he would ask me questions, and several of them stopped by afterwards and said, I'm glad we did it this way because other people asked questions that I didn't think of, but then I was glad to hear the info. So it worked out real well. And from both of those RAV events, I got calls and office visits from, that wanted more information. So that was the whole point, I guess. Then the worst part, they want us to get in touch with, by phone or in person, every veteran in the county. There are 14,000 veterans in Minniah County. There's no way I'm going to talk to that many veterans. So they send me a list every month of 100 names. I try to call them. Sometimes you have to leave a message. Sometimes they're disconnected. I don't know how all these lists are that they have. But they knew that I wasn't going to be able to do this. So this, the State Department of Veterans Affairs has an office in Sioux Falls, and all of those employees with the state also make calls from Minniah County. So we're trying to get it covered, but that's, and I, and I want to just give you, I don't know how you are on the phone. I'm not one to just call up people cold and start a conversation. It's difficult for me. But I found out WWII veterans, they don't want to talk about their benefits, they know all about their benefits, but they want to talk about their service. So they want to tell you their stories. So those could be very interesting phone calls. And, but, I also called a lady one time and asked for the veteran, and she said, she paused and she said, he can't come to the phone right now. And I said, I introduced myself and told her why I was calling, and I said, are you Mrs.? And she said, yes. And she paused again, and she said, as a matter of fact, he can't come to the phone because I just got back from his funeral. So what do you say? I mean, that, that was awful. So I apologized, and, but, that's, she was very nice about it, and I explained that to call me about widows' benefits, and so I think it worked out all right. But when you call people cold, that's, you just don't know what's going to happen, so. But those are the four parts of the Reaching All Veterans Program that we've been involved in, and we're still working on it. I got a banner to take to all the events, and we took it to the stand-down, and any events that I'm involved in, and also Human Services has taken it to some places where they've been speaking. So it's, I think it turned out real well. And then I want to share one more thing. Leave you with a smile. Last Friday, we had the Women's Veterans Conference. The VA puts this on every year for women veterans, and it's always very interesting, very entertaining. We have a nice lunch, and they always have wonderful speakers. And this year... And this year, at every place setting, they had a thank-you note from a grade school student to the veterans. And they said, "Be sure and take your thank-you note home with you. That's for you." So I wanted to read your mine. It says, "Dear veterans, thank you for protecting all of the people I care about and the ones I don't. You are very strong and brave. Do your helmets get hot? I think they look neat. Your friend, Austin." I wish I knew where Austin was, I'd give him a hug. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Pat.
Any questions for me?
Any questions for Pat?
I have one.
Commissioner Kelly.
Pat, I should know this, but what, how do you define veteran? You know, we've got an awful lot of National Guardsmen deployed, and Air Guardsmen were deployed.
A veteran, according to state law, is anyone who served on active duty honorably. That would include any Guardsman or Reserve who has been deployed under Title 10, which is the federal government. If it was Title 31, like a state thing, like a flood or a fire, that wouldn't be considered for VA benefits, but all the servicemen that have gone to Iraq and Afghanistan, and yes, they're all considered combat veterans.
Okay, they're federal then when they're deployed. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Pat, for what you do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bye.
Item 14 is Consider a Contract Amendment in the Provision of Dental Services in accordance with the Inmate Healthcare Contract with Armour Correctional Healthcare. Jeff Gromer.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jeff Gromer, Joe Warden. I believe you all got the short memo I prepared for Ken, but what we're asking is to modify the contract with Armour to account for eight hours of onsite dental care, as opposed to the process that was originally in the contract, was two hours of onsite care a week, offset by offsite care. Couple of reasons for the switch. One, we're having a very difficult time finding a dentist to come in for two hours a week for the onsite care. Secondly, I think from the memo, it's fairly apparent that the cost, we'd actually save money by having eight hours of onsite care as opposed to the two, and then supplement it with offsite. The eight hours onsite in the memo indicates with zero offsite clinic dollars, that's, we wouldn't be able to totally eliminate offsite care. There'd always be emergencies and things that would come up of that nature, but on a routine basis, we would drastically reduce the offsite care needs.
Any questions for Warden Gromer? Commissioner Barret?
Warden, there's no opportunity to use the city dentists over at the Human Services...
That's who we currently use, which is offsite care.
Okay, and they're not, they're charging us for that?
Oh, yeah.
I mean...
Yeah.
These are their people, right? I mean, if they were back on the street, if we released them, the city would be taking care of them at their own dime, wouldn't they? I mean, I just wonder why they're billing us.
I don't know how their funding structure works. They'd most likely be...
Sliding scale.
What's that?
Sliding scale, possibly.
Yeah. Depending on their need. Once they come into the jail, we're obviously obligated to provide them with needed care.
Any other questions for Warden Gromer? Look for a motion.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for contract amendment in the provision of dental services in concordance with the inmate healthcare contract with Armour Corrections Healthcare. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Warden.
Next item is Minnehaw County Commissioner Lee Averon reports.
Are there any liaison reports? Commissioner Kelly.
The group that's working with TSP on our jail project is in town. They were in town last week for two days. They're in town this week for two days, and I don't remember what the rest of the schedule is, but they're on track, working hard on this thing and interviewing everybody and getting any players involved. They're asking them, whether it be Metro or anything else. I think the process is going along quite well, and we will probably be able to give you updates in another five to six weeks, pretty much of where we're at.
Okay, any other reports? I have two. My group with elected officials, the city of Sioux Falls, Lincoln County, and Minnehaw County Representatives met this last week to talk about planning and zoning improvements. We will be meeting again next month to also talk with those three entities, planning directors, to look at forms and see which directions we can use to streamline and make things more efficiently between the three government entities. And so we've just gotten started. It was a good meeting. We met this past week.
Cindy, is the mayor's office included in that group?
There are two representatives from city council, and I believe that the mayor's office had a, I can't tell you that for sure.
I know there was some discussion at Development Foundation about getting the chair of the two counties, plus the mayor, and bringing him into some discussion, and a city council chair to bring in, just to meet quarterly, if nothing else, to discuss mutual problems and get a little more communications. I think the city has gotten the message that we would like a little more communication from the city as to what's going on, instead of finding out after it's been decided. So there should be some improvement. I hope you get an invite on this one of these days.
The other thing that we talked about in that planning meeting was the Dakota Pipeline and the city and Ken are working to set up a meeting, a joint meeting between our three government entities, similar to what they had down at the Monson Road Morning Star Center, to actually inform elected officials as to what this pipeline idea is. My other one was that today is a reading day sponsored by Sulan Libraries for children across the Minnehaw County, and a lot of public officials and others will be reading in classrooms today a little. I think it's called Bunny Cake, and I will be going to Tri Valley School and reading to six classes this afternoon. So, all right. Any other liaison reports? Okay. Is there any new business? Is there any old business? Ken has some old business.
The never-ending continuing...
I swear, this is like the piece of gum that you keep hitting on your shoe. As you will recall, and that you dealt with the compromise of lien requests here last week, where we had identified two liens, and you had authorized the compromise of those two liens based on a payment of 25%. Well, lo and behold, and that during the final push on the title work, the title company and the Register of Deeds found one more in a different name, but the same person. And that, and this one didn't have a social security number attached to it. That's why it kind of got missed the first time around through the process, and it was under a different name. But there's a lien out there on this one, and it is for DPNO. I can't even read it here. I think it's 75175, and the amount of $239.40. And in order to expedite it, the applicants are requesting that you authorize the same payment option on this one as you did the other two, or 25% of the lien. In this case, it'd be $60.
I'll make a motion.
I have a motion.
And I hope it never comes back.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the compromise of lien for a payment of $60. Commissioner Kelly.
You know, I was concerned last time, and I'm still concerned that we're setting 25% as the new norm for compromising these liens. I think once we open that door, we're going to be asked for this several times. I think it's the wrong way to go, and I cannot support this motion.
Is there any other comments or questions? That being said, I have a motion for $25, $60, 25% or $60 on this lien. A roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Kelly?
No.
Peckus?
Yes.
Bennega?
Yes.
Barth?
Aye.
Heiberg? Yes. Motion passes four to one. I ask for a motion to...
There's only one. I just want to remind the commission and the public again, and that there will be no meeting on December, or, excuse me, November 4th, that week because of the election, and the following week because the Veterans Day falls on the regular Commission Day. We will be having the commission meeting that week on Wednesday, November 12th. We just don't think we can go two weeks without a meeting. So November 12th will be that meeting.
Are we still scheduled a building committee meeting on the 4th?
We currently still have that on the calendar because that's an ongoing commitment, but if we don't have, and the only reason we've held it open is we didn't know if you wanted to brief, if there was anything coming out of the work of the Criminal Justice Committee and some briefings that you wanted to provide the other commissioners. And that, but it's still on there, but it can easily be taken off if the commission so decides.
All right.
Because that's just the standing meeting of the building committee.
Commissioner Bennega.
We already have a pre-schedule of when the architect and the consultant are going to start developing options and opening discussions, and that isn't until November 13th. So I don't see a reason to bring something up on the 4th, when the architect won't be ready by then.
All right. Anything else for old business? I have a motion for a gentleman to, excuse me.
I have two minutes of your time.
You have to introduce yourself, please.
My name is John Berkman from Brandon, and I'm currently having problems with a developer out there along with the city of Brandon, where I have given property to the city of Brandon, and I am in the county, and this property that I have given, that's fine, the manx did. The developer, when I sold him the property, I put an easement in to get to my remaining property on the other side of the creek, which is north of the park property that I give to the city. And they are, with the previous planning and zoning person, Dave Swere, that was in Brandon...
Mr. Chair, make sure to speak into the mic.
Yeah, talk into the mic.
Was involved in the development, and they have platted multiple times over the top of my easement, and they seem to think they do not need to honor this easement to where they are going to be land-locking my existing property on the east side of my creek. And I have got them to stop. They've got one street left to where if they put in this cul-de-sac, my nine acres on the other side of the creek will be landlocked, and I will have no legal access to that property. And I would just, I guess, I have talked to a gentleman up at Pier, and he had said to do something about restraining order on, I don't know if it's the development or the city. I didn't get all the specs on it, but I just wonder if there's any help a guy could get from you guys or advice as far as to get this matter resolved. I've talked to, I've been working with this developer for the last four or five years to pinpoint my exact easement, and every time we talk, he always turns a table, and what can I do to benefit him? Or what can I, what more can I give to the city? I've already given the city approximately $100,000 worth of property and given stuff to the police department in Brandon in memorial of my father and my brother, and every time I go down to that city office, hands out. I am so sick and tired of that city and the administrators in that city treating not just me. I can think of tens, hundreds of people in the city of Brandon that they've treated very poorly.
Okay. Mr. Berkman, can you give me your address? And we'll see what you can do to help you.
My address is 102 North Chestnut. I'm on the east side of Brandon.
North Joshua?
North Chestnut.
102 North Chestnut. Scott, do you have any help on this planning issue for us?
Well, I think we've talked, we've met a couple times, and I've looked at the maps with the property owner, and in my evaluation, it really ends up being a civil matter between, I mean, it's a property owner matter between him as the property owner and the city of Brandon. As you know, I mean, we have no control over how a city or plats that are approved within the city. And what they're, what it looks like they're doing is, as they continue to develop, they're impacting private easements that were set up with him previously, and...
You can't landlock.
And that's, and I've discussed that with him, is that, you know, legally, they can't landlock him because that, you know, that's an issue of access in the state. But in reality, as much as I think that there may be a planning issue there, it really is an internal matter with the city of Brandon and how they're plating their property. I don't have any way to say you can't do that. And then I think it's a, you know...
Don't you think, though, that it's a planning conflict? When the planning commissioner, Dave Swere, was on the council down there for how many years? He was also involved in this development, building houses and making plans and everything with the developer. That's a conflict of interest. He railroaded right over the top of everything I wanted.
Mr. Berkman, we'll just have our attorney comment for you.
And a couple of things, you know, if you've had legal counsel in the past when you've worked with this developer, have you?
Yeah, well, you know, when I, when we had the plat, when we had the plat done and everything, it was all in black and white. It's registered at the courthouse.
Okay, so it's recorded.
I've got a purchase agreement that the developer, when he purchased this property, said that there was going to be a street access, not an easement, a street access.
So I guess if you have something recorded, I would strongly advise you to go to a private attorney, tell them everything we've told you, because your remedy is in civil court for this type of harm. If what you're telling us is the case, where you had an easement over a certain area and it's been recorded, that is something that you can talk with a private attorney about instigating some legal action to get that declared and cleared up if they're plating over the top of a legal easement and blocking that access. Beyond that, though, is the county, because it deals with a city government, you know, our county government doesn't sit on top of our...
Even on a county, it borders the...
Yeah, it doesn't matter because it's, no, because it's in the city.
Because the property where the easement is, is in the city. That remedy has to be sought against the city. We don't, we don't have a supervisory role over what Brandon does as the county. But I would really strongly...
Even on a matter like this, where they're trying to landlock me, you can't say, "Hey, put a stop on this development until this is resolved," or something.
I think you're going to have to bring an action for an injunction or some type of relief with an attorney against the city of Brandon. But we, because the easement is on city land, it's not something the county can order a municipality to do under our current structure. That's my best advice to you, is if what you're telling me is the case, I would strongly urge you to seek private counsel to look into this for you.
Okay.
And if you have somebody you used in the past that's familiar with this, even better. So, okay?
All right.
Thank you. Mr. Berkman, you could have talked during public comment, too, and you wouldn't have had to sit here through this whole meeting. You could have got up at that time. So thank you very much for coming and enduring our meeting, too.
Thanks for your time. Appreciate it.
Yeah. I could use a motion for executive session for personnel and litigation with...
Make a motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.